Just going to begin, we have already set the pledge, it was wonderful and everyone appreciated it. It's 7:30 PM in Reed Field, this is our regular Select Board meeting for Monday, October 17th. What we'd like to do is begin with our items, our regular meeting items, our warrants and our minutes. And then, before we get to that, we're going to get to some human resource items. So, item 23032, approval of minutes from meetings in August 29th and September 19th. Are there any comments, cares, or feelings toward these minutes? Or shall we entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, for both of you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve, it has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from August 29th and September 19th. All in favor? Thank you very much, and Catherine, are you, please answer in the affirmative?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent, our next item is item 23033, warrants 13 through 16. These are also in your packet, looks like we have, is this Steve, is this your go-through here?
It is indeed, yes.
Alright, this is Mr. Steve DeAngelis, first time going through the warrants and warrant review, no pressure, go ahead.
I feel no pressure, but I have to say, I will give you a little background, I spent an hour and a half today reading through the warrant and I was, I was hoping for a little more drama, which I guess you really don't want drama in a financial statement, but it turned out to be like way easier to understand than I thought it would be. Teresa is amazing, yeah.
We are very lucky to have Teresa.
Stunning, I was kind of dreading it, thinking it's gonna be really confusing, and it was not. There was also zero drama, it made all perfect sense, you know, so I wish I could give you some really exciting drama about it, but I can't. So, the total was, the warrants 15 and 16 was $386,019.37. Of that, $24,952.06 was payroll. $361,067.31 was to vendors, and of that 361 and change, $309,458.75, no surprise, went to RSU 38, as usual, that's the biggest hunk of it. The, seriously, there were virtually no, there was nothing that was like surprising, but there was a couple of cool things that I want to share.
Please do.
One was that I had noted already, just driving around town for last week, it's like, man, the roadside mowing is spectacular. And I'm kind of a connoisseur of good mowing, and I've long noticed that, and it was great. And I noticed that, as looking through the timesheets, that Matt Seems is the person who did the mowing, at least we paid him for it.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming he did.
He did.
And he did a, can I say kick ass? Probably not, but he did a great job.
We appreciate all that.
Roadside mowing, it was really phenomenal, money well spent in my book, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And then, one other thing will be that I thought was also interesting, Dennis, related to you and I'm, I'm gonna mention anyway, is that I noticed that it was, the pig scramble actually cost us less than was, we thought it would be, because he, the guy who provided the pigs, sold four pigs, as a result of them being at the, there, and so that reduced the cost significantly. So that was kind of a nice little bonus, I thought, so, but that's really, that is the extent of the excitement in the war.
Good, excellent, and just to clarify, Steve, you're talking about warrants 15 and 16?
Yes.
Just to make sure, very well, what I'm gonna do is ask if there are any other questions about these, otherwise, I will entertain a motion to accept warrants 15 and 16.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants 15 and 16 to the amount of $386,019.37.
I'll second.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded to accept warrants 15 and 16 in the amount of $386,019.37. Any further discussion? All in favor, present, and Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Sean, I think you're still on the hook for warrants 13 and 14.
I am.
Go backwards a little bit, I believe we've already voted, so is this redundant?
No, you still need to vote publicly to accept these.
Yes, okay, sounds good. Thank you, I didn't mean to skip ahead.
No, that's alright, I was a little worried when you said 13, I only read 15.
I was ready.
No worries.
Mine's is even less entertaining.
It's just, it's like, yeah, it's more like a rite of passage, initiation, you know, you get thrown to the water. 13 and 14 will now be talked about in warrant form by Sean Keegan, Sean?
So, warrants 13 and 14 for the sum of $64,263.06. We had our employee retirement, we paid out for, a big chunk was for that, and we paid out to KB Cog for their continuation of our comprehensive plan, and then there was a large fee towards the air design for all those lovely soccer shirts that all the kids played in this year, which is offset by rent costs, but it was a significant number on there of $2,858, just due to those numbers. But other than that, like Steve said, Teresa's great, super boring.
Yeah. Excellent, I would entertain a motion to approve warrants 13 and 14.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants 13 and 14 in the sum of $64,263.06.
It has been moved and?
Seconded.
Seconded to approve warrants 13 and 14, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to the end of our regular meeting items. I'd like, if it's the pleasure of the board, to take two items out of order. The first item to be the appointment, item 23038, consider the appointment of Jaren Shaw to the Conservation Commission. I'd like to do that first, the second one is, I'd like to recognize our friends 23039, for our automobile graveyard permit renewal applications, to get those out of the way as well. Yes?
Maybe we could add one more with the?
You wanna do the, yes, that's good, item 23040, we'd like, if you don't mind wrapping up that little bit, Jaren, we'll have you go first, if you don't mind, is the board okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, let's do it, okay.
What page is that?
Sure, oh, that's a good question, and one that I'm sure I'll be able to answer.
Oh, right here, 39.
39, thank you so much, alright. Jaren, we are having you join us tonight, because it is your first appointment, and thank you very much, first of all, for offering to do this. Does the board or anyone have any questions or anything like that to ask?
I'll just ask, why would you like to be on the Conservation Committee?
We suggested this committee, and I've been in touch with the committee inside in a couple meetings, just thought maybe it could be helpful.
Awesome.
Very good, thanks for showing interest.
Yeah, we need more volunteers, so thank you very much. Any other questions for Jaren?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jaren to the Conservation Commission for a period beginning today through, looks like June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jaren Shaw to the Conservation Commission for a period beginning tonight through June 30th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, present, Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jaren, thank you, you are free to go on your merry way. Gentlemen, would you like to come on up? We will take item 23039, and consider automobile graveyard permit renewal applications. This can also be found on down the line here in your, there you go, looks like 67 is where those begin. Would we like to have any questions about that, Eric, any questions?
I think the best thing would have Chip give a quick summary of his process and the scope, and we do have two applicants, who every year we tell them, they don't have to be here, but they always come, so thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead, Chip.
Sure, let's be brief, this year, this was a pleasure, my first year, somebody told me about, two weeks before it was all due, that this had to be done, we forgot.
Somebody, huh?
Somebody, and then last year, so this year, like I said, it was a pleasure, we got the notices out almost on time, all the gentlemen that, you know, they went out to, responded quickly, paid their tab quickly, and the inspections, I want to tell you, were a pleasure. All of them, you know, say junkyards, these guys take pride in what they do, and every one of the three that I visited showed me what they done to approve from last year. So, it's a real, you know, it's a pleasure almost, you know, this time of year, and these guys have their issues, and their issues of tires, which I mentioned in the report I sent to you, they have issues with the state not supporting them to get rid of mercury switches and other things, but they get by, they find other ways to get around it, so I give each one of them an A this year, and I'd ask that the Select Board approve them for another year of business in Reed Field.
Excellent, thank you, Chip.
I would like to make those, are appropriate to do that yet?
Unless, I mean, unless there's anything, yeah, if you wanna, anything you guys have to say.
Do you guys want to say?
Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and approve, go ahead, Carol.
Let me find the name here, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for automobile graveyard for the year 2022 to 2023. That's all I need to say.
There's a couple in there, different names.
Uh, yeah, yes, there we go, Lucas Auto Parts.
Oh. And we'll include Lucas Auto Parts, is there other names?
Ken, Ken Mark, yeah.
Say again?
Ken's Dragon.
Okay, you can amend for me.
And antique auto recycling.
Yes.
Thank you, Catherine.
Second that.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded, I believe, to approve the application for automobile graveyard and junkyard for Lucas Auto Parts salvage, Ken's Dragon, and antique automobile?
Recycling.
Recycling, is there any other discussion?
So these four different, like, three different locations?
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha.
All in face?
So long.
In present, nice, and Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Catherine, you guys are all set, thank you once again, we appreciate your being here, and we always appreciate you showing up.
Thank you for coming, even though you didn't have to.
It means a lot to us, yes, and last but not least, we're going to, out of order, take item 23040, which is to consider a marijuana establishment application for happy campers cannabis. We have 10 minutes for this, I want to make sure everyone gets to our section here, and make sure that we know what we're doing. We start our, in our packet, on page 86, through the assessment information. Anyone have any questions before we hear from our friends here? Alright, you guys just want to tell us a little bit about your establishment, talk to us a little bit about what you want to do, what you're looking for in Reed Field, and why this is a good match for you.
Sure, so we proposed using the location at 769 Main Street, it's the old depot, sweet old market. We have been able to work with the owner and have it cleaned up significantly. It's our goal to really make it a space that's very welcoming, obviously, to the appropriate people. It's going to be a medical-only establishment, there will be no recreational and no grow facility of any kind, all of that is done offsite. So, yeah, I mean, that's really our goal, we'd just like to make it into a welcoming place that, for people in town to come, who have their appropriate licensing, and to have people from outside of town to come and also experience. I mean, to be honest, I didn't know much about Reed Field before we found our first location that we were trying to get into, and we've been here so many times since, I'm so happy that the first one didn't work out, because this new location is just so amazing for so many reasons. It's definitely our goal to eventually purchase the property down the line, and we've already had that talk with the owner as well.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's basically it.
Excellent, you have a great package, we've seen these before, we have an establishment here with Aaron and Boog Glow, and you have really run a lot of information here, things that we would, you know, have been curious about. Any member of the Select Board have any questions about things they saw in the packet? It looked pretty comprehensive, and I was very thankful for the level of detail and work that you have put into this. And I also appreciate your respect for coming into our town, looking to do business in a respectful way, so that means a lot to us.
Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Sure.
What sort of duration have you got for a lease right now?
So, we just did the one-year lease, normally we would have done a longer one, except for that, as I mentioned, it is our goal to purchase the property, and we would definitely like to do that after the first year, we just want to see, you know, obviously how well it does and things like that, but I don't, that's definitely the trajectory we're heading in, so we just have a one-year lease for.
Oh, go ahead, no, I just wanted to ask a little bit about what you're looking for, it's gonna be mostly dried flour and cartridges, is that right?
Yes.
Now, is there, will there be other concentrates and things like that, that you'll be offering, things like that? Or are you just looking to specialize?
It'll mostly be the flour and the concentrates, however, we have looked into getting our tobacco permit, you actually have to get a tobacco permit to sell.
It's a new thing, yeah.
But, but that's, in order to fill, we tried to fill out that application in advance, but in order to do that, you actually have to show photos of your signage at the shop, so we were waiting to do that, but once you have the appropriate licensure, it'll allow us to do more things, but the only thing we would probably do are the dabs, which are just the resin.
Just more concentrate, yeah, and things like that, different types of things, shatter and butter and all that random stuff, sure. And then, and then basically, you know, flour and things like that, do you, do you, is, do you do your own cultivation yourself? So that's sort of, it's sort of farmed the table, so.
Yeah, exactly, and that's part of, yes, and actually, we did our first grow this year outdoor, and we transitioned to completely organic, so we want everything to be as healthy as possible.
And our concentrates will be organic as well.
Good.
They'll be made with the outdoor flower.
Nice, and how do you, how do you do that, do you have, do you have a process that you prefer?
Yeah, so we'll do bubble hash, so we use water, and then we'll use a heat press to get the oil out after we make the hash.
So you're not messing around with a butane?
No, we want to keep everything as natural.
That's a whole different permit that we're not interested in.
Yeah, just be careful.
Don't kind of go against our organic.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, it's like, that's a different thing altogether.
And we'd like to give more education to the customers about, because a lot of people don't know, they see the cheaper option, and they always go for that, and our goal, since we grew everything ourselves these years, keep prices where people can afford the organic options and get the medicine in.
Excellent, I agree, any questions, Eric?
Well, I just wanted to say that this is the second one of these type of medical facilities that we've had, medical caregiver, and so I really appreciate the thoroughness, the completeness of your application, you know, for the benefit of the board members who are new to this, and to the public, we had an ordinance that was passed a few years ago that allowed this type of activity, this type of commercial activity, and the first step is to have applicants work with the code officer, I want to thank Chip from, you know, getting into it and helping move this one along, it went well, the planning board did an excellent job, it took, I think, two, 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 two meetings, and then we moved through, and now the Select Board has final review and approval to make it as public a process as possible, so I think it was a good process, I'm very excited to have you guys coming to town, and I think it went well, so thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Carol. Carol, go ahead.
Just to say, and talking with you over here, I was glad to hear that the gasoline tank was going to be removed, that settled, improved the appearance a lot.
Yeah.
I was actually surprised, but he said, yeah, we talked to Ron about it, and he actually came to us and said that was the next step, that he had already contacted people who come out and do it, I don't know anything about that, but, but it will be taken out, which, which will definitely allow more parking friendly.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the issue around here, is at a premium, so you do have a good location for that, thank you.
No, I just think it'd be great to see that space utilized for something.
Yeah, and I think it just, I think it's just another example of like, you know, it's, you know, we're growing businesses, and I think you talk about the business climate in Reed Field, this is what we do, that's the Select Board, this is how we support. If there's nothing else for you guys, if you don't mind, I'm gonna call Chip up, just to get some comments that he might have, just stick around just in case, but I don't want to deprive Chip of his opportunity for some Zoom time. Absolutely, please, yes.
Thanks for the opportunity, let me come back here again.
Yeah.
Again, another feel-good time, I do a lot of work in the office, that sometimes it's not really exciting, it's not really happy, but these two came to the office completely prepared, very professional, and they're, you guys know about the planning board, they're pretty tough and pretty stoic, these guys got by the planning board in the minimum amount of time, and on the night that they were gonna get their approval there, somebody got a text message saying, sorry, you've lost your lease, I sold the building, she was, they were crushed, and I said, hang in there, find another place in Reed Field, you'd be good business people here, why don't you go talk to Ron Violet, maybe you can get him to clean up the place? I have spent over a year, close to two years, trying to get that place cleaned up, and I've watched him over the last month and a half, just taking out garbage, taking out a shed that we don't even want to think what was in there, and cleaning it up, and it was because these guys came in so bubbly, so effective, they, you know, they had a great relationship, and I am really, really happy to get people like this coming to work, live, maybe eventually, in Reed Field, and so this is a really feel-good event, I hope for everybody, it's accomplished many purposes, and I hope you can show them the support I've tried to give them in getting to this point, thank you all.
Thank you very much, Chip, we appreciate it, if there's nothing else, any other members of the Select Board have anything else to say?
Just, again, I, my sons and I, my daughter and I have talked for years about how, you know, gotta do something with the depot, and, and it's just so exciting to see it, I'm really pleased, and, and especially to hear from Chip that, that you guys were so prepared when you came in, too, that makes a giant difference, because that bodes well for your success in the business, too, you know, being prepared makes a giant difference, so congratulations.
Absolutely, I'll entertain a motion.
Bruce, did you have your?
I'll just add, I'm really glad to have those plans followed around.
That's right, let the minutes show, the Conservation Commission approves. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to accept this application.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to accept, it's been moved.
Moved.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded to approve the application for happy campers cannabis at the Main Street location on Route 17, is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? And Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you guys very much, we appreciate it, welcome to Reed Field.
Thank you.
Very well, now that we have alleviated people waiting too long for the line, unless?
By you.
Are you Linia? Oh my heavens, alright, we'll do one more, Linia, we're gonna get you out of here as well.
Not that we don't like you.
No, 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 it's just, it's just in case, item 23037 is to consider the appointment of, and I'm saying this right, right, Linia? Linia? Linia, oh, okay, gotta hit that, okay, gotcha, Linia Coons to the Conservation Commission, you can find her information on page, I will tell you in a moment.
36.
Thank you, Catherine, page 36, said the voice from beyond, good. 36, Sadie Dunro, tell us a little bit about yourself and just introduce yourself, Linia.
I grew up in conservation, because my father was a, was active in the Department of Conservation and the Water Improvement Commission, and worked with Muskie on the Clean Water Act, which is being celebrated on main calling right now.
Yeah.
So, and then I went on to become a life science teacher, and taught life sciences for decades, and have retired, which is a pretty good job, but I've been involved with life sciences and looking at the big picture of ecology and conservation and existing industries. I remember the last log drive, I saw it.
Okay, we're just tonight getting some gas tanks removed, so, yeah, excellent, you guys have any questions?
I have a question.
Go for it, Steve.
Are you related to the Coons skiing boys?
Those would be my nephews and my niece.
Cool, just checking.
An interest of Steve's, minor, excellent, anything else? I'd entertain a motion to accept the appointment of Linia Coons.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been seconded to appoint Linia Coons to the Conservation Commission for a term that begins tonight and ends on June 30th, 2023, next year. All in favor? Very well, and Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, alright, you are absolved of any further torture of listening to the workings of government, but if you want to stick around, we're fun people.
It's very interesting.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but we move now to Select Board Communications, we have five minutes set aside, if any member of the Select Board would like to speak now, you may do it.
Are there other questions?
Is there anyone online?
Sonu Clark, or do they have to be here?
No, those are repeaters.
So we don't have to?
No, they don't have, they're not.
Never mind.
They're not, they're not, well, you know, I meant that, what I'm saying is, yeah, let me just back up on that. Select Board Communications, anybody going once?
I was just like, I was just gonna tell Catherine the room is now empty.
Oh, yeah.
So she could, what does that mean? Why does that matter, Sean?
We're still being recorded, just.
There we go, Carol, did you have something?
Just a very short thing, so we did have Small Business Saturday, which in October was called Oktoberfest, a couple of Saturdays ago. It was good, it was basically an effort to kind of wrap up the summer season, some people had a rough summer, and there's like one more, like push to get some sales before they closed up shop. One of the vendors said it was her best day of the year, I think we had maybe at least 50 come through ours, so it was not Heritage Day's volume, but it was worthwhile, and there's going to be another one, so after Black Friday, the next day is Small Business Saturday, it's kind of on a national level, and then Monday is Cyber Monday, so on, I think it's November 26th, whatever that Saturday is after Thanksgiving, will be Small Business Saturday, we have 10 yard signs that we can put somewhere, and anybody interested can just let us know, and we'll put it out there.
Excellent, thank you for your work on that, Carol, anyone else? Very well, we'll move on to staff reports, we have five minutes allotted for the first Town Manager Report, and then the Treasures Report in September, Eric, this is you.
Alright, thank you, I will start with administration and personnel, I will note that the Town Office will be closed on Friday, November 11th for Veterans Day, we will be having some festivities here in town, or not festivities, but some ceremonies, use a more proper word, we will have a parade and lunch, everything will be starting at 10 AM at the Reed Field Corner Cemetery, we usually have the Fire Department managing traffic control, they will have a wreath ceremony, we will have speakers from, I guess Dennis will be speaking on behalf of the Select Board, and we usually have a representative or senator come and speak, so we will be doing some things to remember our veterans, we have the bell ceremony, and I want to thank Nancy Perkins, Dale Potter-Clark, Carol, for helping with the Reed Field United Methodist Church, if I got that right, and they're all working together, along with, you know, Ben, who's been mentioned a few times from the Cemetery Committee, and our, one of our staff, to pull together this event, so thanks to everybody that's been involved with that, and the volunteers, including the Boy Scouts, will be present. So come on out, 10 o'clock, and then the 11 o'clock ceremony right here with the bell at the Town Office. Five of our town staff attended the Main Municipal Association Annual Convention, and had the benefit of two days of training and networking, and so I want to thank the Select Board for giving them that opportunity, it was really great, I ended up staying with Ben in the hotel, and he woke up, he's like, you know, that was a really great training, first thing out of his mouth, I couldn't believe that, I was like, Ben, what about coffee? You know, he was, he was just really excited, so it was great to see staff respond in that way, because a lot of them hadn't been Angelica, and it was just a great time for everybody to network and learn. So, I have been looking at text-based messaging software as an alternative means of communication with the public, I know it's been a Select Board goal to try to improve communication. Uh, as an alternative means of communication with the public, I know it's been a select board goal to try to improve communication. A lot of people say, well, I don't have a, a computer, but most people uh, have cell phones. Uh, and we can reach a larger audience that way and also, um, it's just an alternative means of communication that might be more direct than email. Uh, and so people can self-subscribe the way they do uh, with any other service, uh, and it's looking like two to four thousand dollars for that type of option. Uh, I think it's something we should be considering and discussing during the budget process, but. Again, another means of communication that's becoming more common for municipalities. Uh, absentee ballots are available. Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
What are your thoughts on access to that? Would that be similar to just our notices that go out, would it be? You know, who could access that? Could Conservation say, we're doing a cleanup day? Could they send out alerts, could committees?
Yeah, we, we, we could do um, something like that and we could either have it be a general notice. Uh, that people could sign up for and include things there, or we could try to have specific categories. Excuse me, much like we do with the, um, the email where people can sign up for rec signups or for budget committee information, things like that. So it's possible.
I'm not, I'm not a pro on this here, but I, I know that the new principal at Maranica is doing a similar thing. For the staff, they're just alerts and that's, I know it doesn't cost anything, however they're, however they're doing it.
I'll talk to her, and we've got two new principals in town, one at the middle school and one at the high school, right?
Yeah, Michelle's the high school, she's awesome, she's really sharp at stuff, and ask her about that.
I will, yeah, cuz she's, we've been in touch a couple of times already.
Free is better than two or three thousand.
I have a question.
Go ahead Catherine.
Whether it's free, which is awesome, or even in the two to four thousand, um, I would. Ask that we consider doing that on the immediate side so that we could do things for this budget season. And promote the warrant articles that are gonna be put out there. It, it doesn't seem like there's really any benefit to waiting if we have some funds that are available and could be used that way. Thank you.
I will, um, yeah.
I would agree with that, I, I feel like, you, you know, if we can, if we can move on this quickly, especially with the winter coming up. And it might be helpful to, to implement that, um, if we are able to, to, to find a way to pay for it, I, I would be. I think it's a great system. It, it, RSU two has a, a text test state, so any RSU two thing comes out, it's a tremendous help.
So a quick question on that, would you like me to bring something back in November or being under the five thousand dollar threshold, would you like me to just find something that works and do it?
I'd like to hear those up.
Okay, good. I'll bring something in November.
Thank you, sir.
That's easy, that's easy. Alright, uh, so moving on, um, absentee ballots, voting, November third. Uh, is the deadline for absentee ballots, that means if you wanna vote in person or pull an absentee ballot. Uh, you need to do it by the close, or by five PM, November third. If you do not, you may be able to get one, but you have to have a true emergency. Um, something like uh, family members having a tragic accident, things like that, it's not just. I didn't show up on Thursday, I wanna do it. Um, I'm not trying to discourage people, but. Oftentimes, we have people that, that um, argue with staff about that and it's state law, it's not something that we put in place. Absentee balloting is a wonderful option, but November third, five PM is the deadline for that, otherwise, we will see everybody on November eighth. And uh, we have eight AM to eight PM at Kent Hill School, uh, and um, lots of opportunity there to vote. So we do have um, a lot happening, so um, definitely try to make time in your day, November eighth to come vote. Did I miss anything on voting, Angelica? Okay, great, alright, just wanna make sure. Uh, roads, traffic and parking and safety. Uh, Pike Industries has completed the ditching and culvert work on Church Road, we expect tree and brush removal to be happening in the spring uh, in preparation for paving. The, we uh, did experiment with offering free dirt, free ditch material to residents. Uh, I've never received, received so many text messages uh, or phone calls or people knocking on the door at the Town Office. Uh, in the same two-hour period than when I offered free dirt, so.
All those clean fill signs you see.
I mean, well, I mean, it's not very clean, I tell everybody, I said it's got nips, it's got like road chunks of asphalt in it, they're like, I'll take it. Yeah, uh, but in all seriousness, um, I think it's gonna be something we're gonna continue with, people will appreciate and it, 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 it's um. We're trying to do it with live loads, so as the contractor puts the material on the truck, we have a place to go, it has to be delivered in town, full truckloads. Uh, and I think we're gonna have a very good system, so if anybody has an interest in clean fill. Uh, we do have that option, we can get people in the queue, um, by visiting the Town Office or giving me a call.
Um, Eric, just a quick one on the previous, so the, I just heard the notice for the work on Church Road was. Not very, um, it could have been notified a little bit earlier than they were.
Uh, not really, we didn't know that, yeah, we didn't really know until Friday of the week before that, that Pike was gonna be on site. Um, so we did what we could with the timeframe we were given by the contractor. Um, so really, we did the best we could with what we had. Um, so I'm actually, I'm very appreciative that we were able to get something out, we went door-to-door, we went above and beyond to make sure people were notified in as much time as possible, so. Um, I understand the criticism, but I just don't think it's justified.
Okay, so the contractor contacted you guys on Friday?
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't have much notice, they, they, we did a site visit, they're like, well, we're not really sure, and then it, it moved forward very, very quickly, so.
Take them where you can get them, right?
Yes, exactly. Alright, um, so a, um, I'm moving on to, um, uh, the. Town, uh, so we do need to issue a RFP for culvert repair and uh, ditching work to happen townwide. That's still um, on the agenda. Uh, truck inspections for Scott Horn uh, for the winter road maintenance, that will happen on October twenty-seventh. Um, also, I received quotes, um, and met with two different vendors to discuss uh, vehicle GPS software. Uh, the cost is about eighteen dollars per month per vehicle, uh, I anticipate five uh, devices for the winter vehicles. Um, this falls right in line with the Select Board goal of developing data uh, for um, um, understanding what type of. Service we want to provide, whether we wanna potentially do it in-house or not. It also something that is beneficial to the contractor, they know where their trucks are, we all know where the trucks are. We know that we're getting the value we should out of the contract, we have options um, to um, better inform the public, a lot of value there. Um, that's gonna cost the town about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a year. Um, so money well spent to ensure that we're getting the services we should and all those other benefits.
Especially on the cost of that contract.
Yeah, for a three hundred eighty thousand dollar contractor or a little bit more. It's nothing, yeah.
That, that's a great, great idea.
So I'll, um, that, that one's gonna be implemented, the contractor is fine with it, um, which is also a positive. Yeah, we wanted to make sure they were, they were okay with it. Um, and then fall roadside mowing is nearly complete. We did have a breakdown, so there's still a few roads, don't, don't go too far to the north and west of town. Uh, because there, there's a few spots that didn't get um, uh, finished up yet, we had a, a breakdown on the, on the disc mower, that is being repaired right now, so. Uh, and then ongoing projects, um, I wanted to report that the town of Vienna, um, approved the construction of a fiber optic to the home. Broadband network, uh, at, just this last month. And that's very exciting for us because it shows one thing, that the work that we did wasn't in vain, that we helped. Communities around us achieve the, the things that, that are gonna help their communities become better. Uh, and by doing that, it strengthens our community by giving potentially, uh, in the future, some alternatives for, for broadband. Um, it's a long ways off, but we do have that happening in our, in our surrounding towns, uh, so I'm happy to, that that's happening. Uh, and then, um, as, as has been reported for the last few months, uh, fire station sprinkler system and library. Renovation projects are still on hold.
Can I ask on that one, the sprinkler system, is that a must-do or it'd be nice to have?
Depends on, on, on who you ask, um, we cannot utilize the fire station to the full extent that it was designed for. Unless we do that work, um, so it really is a must-have, um, it would allow us to have overnight ambulance crews if we wanted to, things like that. Um, it's also a good way to protect millions of dollars in assets, uh, and so. Someone could say, well, don't do it, don't spend the money, but. It, it's, it's insurance to protect our equipment and it gives us more capacity, so. That's kinda where I would answer that one, yeah. Alright.
Anything else, Eric?
Uh, nothing for Town Manager.
Good, alright, let's sally forth into the uh.
Treasure, alright, um, this one's pretty quick, it was a pretty straightforward month. Uh, check reconciliation was completed through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, everything looked good. Um, we, um, we do have Steve now on, uh, for, for warrants, uh, he's uh, on the hook through, um, December. Uh, I don't know who's next, but I just know Steve, Steve's the guy, and I appreciate Steve sitting down with both me and Teresa to learn about the process, ask questions. Uh, and to really get, uh, get his hands dirty on it, uh, and as he said, um, we made it really boring for him, so. Uh, with respect to the audit, the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two audit is now underway, we will have field work happening in the office on October twenty-first and twenty-second. We rolled right from the last year's audit into, um, the one that we had just finished on, uh, uh, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, and we hope this one goes a bit quicker, um, additionally, we're gonna have some training happening with that, uh, that I'll talk about more in the budget section. The budget process, uh, we are gonna be reviewing a number of those things tonight. And um, I just wanna point out, uh, that, that June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three is the secret ballot vote. If we, um, we have information that comes out at these meetings, it'll be published online, uh, but that is gonna be publicly available information. Comments, uh, this report covers the month of September, revenues and expenses should be at twenty-five percent. Real estate payments for the month, uh, and year are down slightly, but that is actually, um, consistent with the budgeting that we've had. We have a little bit less of a tax impact this year and so, um, understandably, revenues are down a little bit in that area. Uh, transfer station revenues were down for the month, um, but this is less than the, the drop we saw. Uh, in the prior month and, um, the budget to actual is the number we look at there. Uh, we, we, I haven't quite been able to discern whether or not this is something to do with fee collection or, um, less material coming in. But it's something to watch, uh, and I'll, I'll make that point. Uh, townwide revenues appear to be up significantly when compared to the last September, but that is likely due to an anomaly in the prior year. So sometimes when we do the year-to-year or the month-to-month, like August to August, September to September, uh, things look funny, but oftentimes fifty percent, right? Uh, it's either an issue with the prior year or an issue with this current year, um, and that anomaly looks like it was from last year. Uh, revenues are, are much more realistic at a one point nine percent for the year-to-date, um, so that's good to see revenues up. Uh, let's see, uh, one of those areas that, that is contributing to that is motor vehicles. Uh, we expected that to go down a little bit, but uh, so far, people have been holding steady with their spending, they continue to buy vehicles. Uh, and that's a good sign, that's one of those first things that'll be the canary in the coal mine is how much money people are spending on vehicles and that's. Um, Ben's steady, uh, for last year, um, so we'll keep an eye on that, but, um, but it's looking good. Uh, and then again, expenses appear to be up significantly for the month, uh, but that's again, uh, a, a prior year activity issue. Related to debt service and RA, RSU thirty-eight payments, excuse me. Uh, so then in summary, in real terms, we are running much closer to our actual budget expenditures. Uh, and that is a better measure of monthly, um, or better measure than our monthly versus year-to-date, year-to-date comparisons, so. I rented that fairly quickly, um, but the point is that there's some anomalous stuff, but it's all, um, explainable and. I think that overall, we're in a very good spot.
Excellent, looks that way and, and taxes and things like that seem to be coming in pretty well.
Yeah, and I, I also noted, um, I didn't say it, but thanks for bringing it up Dennis, that, um, interest payments on taxes continue to underperform. Which is, which is wonderful, that, that means people are paying their taxes on time, there's less penalties. Uh, and that's another one of those canaries that we wanna keep an eye on.
So they're buying more cars and they're paying their taxes on time. That's an amazing thing. Uh, anyone else for the Treasures Report for Eric? Otherwise, we will happily move forward. Thank you so much. Um, item, uh, our next item is Boards, Committees, Commissions and Departments, five minutes. Um, I think, um, we have had, uh, some, uh, minutes from the Age Friendly Committee. Um, and, uh, we'd like to thank them for that, um, if there's nothing else, uh, we will go to public communication. Uh, if there is anyone via Zoom, uh, that would like to, uh, address the, uh, Select Board, you may do it now. If you are on Zoom, please, you can either, uh, unmute, uh, you can raise your hand, whatever you'd like, but we will. Throw it out there. Very well, uh, we will move forward. Our next item is, uh, item twenty-three zero thirty-four. Consider the appointment of Sonia Clark as warden for the November eighth election. Uh, Sonia's information is in our packet. Um, and it is on page thirty-one, um, you can see that we do this often, Sonia does a great job of doing this. Um, and there's really not much discussion, she's done this before, which is why she's not here. Is there a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve Sonia Clark as warden for the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two election.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Sonia Clark's nomination and appointment as a warden for, uh, the upcoming election on November eighth. Is there any further discussions? All in favor? And Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our next appointment is for Greg Durgen back to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Greg was a part of this, resigned, uh, but now has decided to come back. Um, and we all know his, uh, uh, background, um, you're, uh, in the packet there. Um, and I think, uh, that's it, or is there any questions about Greg being a part of the Comprehensive Plan Committee? Good, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint Greg Durgen on the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the term of twenty-twenty-three.
Yep, uh, through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, it's been moved. And seconded to accept Greg Durgen's appointment to the Comprehensive Plan Committee that expires next June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our next item is to consider, uh, a reappointment of Stephanie Donaldson to the Conservation Commission. Stephanie was a member of this, is now back, uh, after leaving, but is ready to resume. This is a reappointment, so that's why, uh, she is not here as well. Um, is there any question or anyone have anything about this appointment?
I have a question. It says at the top of this application that it's an alternate position, is that correct, Eric or Angelica?
That is correct, she, uh, requested to be a, an alternate as opposed to a full member and so that kinda switched things around with the other applicants. Um, and we, if you notice, we appointed what, three people to the Conservation Commission, uh, today, so, uh, they're gonna be very, they're gonna be at full capacity, so that's a. Um, that is correct.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept Stephanie Donaldson's reappointment to the Conservation Commission for term through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-four.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Stephanie Donaldson's appointment to the Conservation Commission as an alternate through, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, we're moving right along, friends, and we appreciate it. We are now to our public hearing, this will be exciting. Um, we have a public hearing for, uh. Excuse me, revisions to the public ways, traffic and parking ordinance, uh, you can find this information. Uh, on page, let's go right here, in your packet, uh, this is on page forty-one. Um, the last time we met, we, uh, said we would have a public meeting. Now we are in that public meeting and in your, um, packet, you can see the, uh, revisions to. The parking ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. Um, is there any discussion, anyone have any questions about? This before we go into our public hearing? Very well, I will declare this public hearing open, and it is so. Good. We, uh, wait for anyone to mention or have any com- uh, commitments, uh, comments about this. Anyone online, we will, uh, the public, uh, hearing is open about this new. So, hearing none, uh, we will declare this public meeting closed. And it is so, uh, but very well, um, now we will vote, uh, to consider. Uh, the, uh, item twenty-three zero ten, consider revisions to the public ways, traffic and parking ordinance. Is this the final approval?
This is, yeah, if I could, Dennis, I just wanna thank the, the Road Committee, um, for their work and helping to, to, to bring this together, to, to improve it. To clarify a number of areas, um, like any ordinance, there's always areas where we can improve and revise. Uh, but, uh, they put a lot of time into this and I appreciate their feedback and the, the diligence of the board, uh, and looking at this carefully. And so just thanks, everybody, for the work.
Yeah, and I just want to point out that when we talked about the retreat earlier, this is exactly what comes out of the retreat. When we look at revising ordinances, trimming things that no longer apply, making ordinances streamlined and better. This is exactly the type of thing that we do. We set the goal to do this and we follow through with it. So thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to accept the public ways, traffic, and parking ordinance.
Make a motion to accept the 2022 revisions to the public ways, traffic, and parking ordinance for town read field effective today.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the new parking revisions as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you, and Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Catherine. We appreciate it, and thank you, everyone. We now move to item 23041. If you're keeping score at home, it's consider an update to the Reed Field property tax maps. Eric, talk to me.
All right, so pre-COVID was the last time we updated our property maps. These are the tax maps that we use for a lot of different things in town, from the actual tax assessments to providing information to realtors, providing information to residents. And these are oftentimes referenced in conjunction with other information relating to the properties, including the property cards. We have a GIS software system that we use internally right now, where staff can access information, maps that are basically live. We can click on a parcel and pull up information, including the property card, up to including if it's updated regularly, the actual current taxes on the parcel. So it's a very powerful multi-use tool. However, there are enough errors on the maps that we haven't made that tool public. And that's a real shame because it can be of value for us to tell, you know, give residents another resource to find information about their properties, to give realtors and prospective residents access to information. It will save them time. It will provide a service available 24/7. And it will allow staff to focus on other activities rather than doing research that normally would be done by someone coming in, looking at a paper map. So a lot of value there. But I guess the point is that the maps have not been updated for several years. We need to update them. We have two ways to approach this. One is to just do the bare minimum and update on an annual basis and not really correct the underlying issues that exist. And then we also have the option of doing it right. I'll just say doing it right the first time, which of course is the more costly option. But it needs to happen, in my view. My recommendation is that we look at the full $11,000 expense to do this. It seems like a lot of money, but we, pre-COVID, we're spending $2,000 to $4,000 every year to get these things updated. And now we have the opportunity to do them more efficiently, to bring all of those maps up to date into this GIS platform that we have, make it available to the public, make it available to realtors, and also prepare us for that full revaluation that we know has to happen in the next couple of years once things settle down from this latest round of chaos. So this is a preparatory measure. I did talk to our auditor, and he said absolutely worth the money. You'd be paying almost that much to have them updated, you know, properly in a paper version. So again, we have a need, and my recommendation is that the board move forward with the use of the revaluation reserve to prepare these maps for that revaluation process and work with our vendor that we have in-house. In order to do that, we would need to suspend the purchasing policy because this does exceed the threshold where we would be normally going out for bid.
But we already have it, we're ready to go.
We already have a vendor in place, and so it's not very efficient to have a different party doing, if we could find somebody to do the work. The reason we're here in the first place, I should have said this originally, is that the folks at the Soil and Water Conservation that have been doing our maps in-house there no longer have the person do that service. It's a hard service to come by. So the logical choice is to integrate with our online mapping tool.
Yeah.
So.
Gotcha. Does everybody understand that makes sense? Seems like in the long run, this is great. I also think it's tremendous tool for just like what you said, like real estate, for folks to get into kind of the nitty-gritty of how things are working. So I would be willing to make a motion to suspend the purchasing policy in order to carry out this service. Go ahead.
I'm a big fan of less paper at times. But my thing I'm thinking right now is I want to make sure we still have access for people that might not have a device. So whether that's the town, maybe we need to consider, do we have a kiosk in the town office that is a laptop and device where we can help support people in town to access these different parts of our website and using those? Because it's cool that we're going digital, but not everybody's going to get that. And so whether it's through the library or through somewhere in the town office, I think that's a big part of what we do with these and we're making these decisions.
Yeah, very good point. We have a couple options there. We will, I'd say we will always have paper. I'm not going to swear by it, but I think it's incredibly valuable to always have paper because things don't always work. And we also use the paper for markups when lots get split. So we will almost always have paper. But the kiosk idea, I like that. I can, I can work on making that happen.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea too. And I think either partnership with the library, it's a tremendous. So that way, if folks, if folks do come in and they have questions about it, they can see in real time if Angelica says, well, you know, if you could do this online as well and just show them exactly where it is. I like that idea. Carol?
To set up something for that purpose, I don't know that that would be used enough to warrant it, but perhaps just somebody that wants to see it and doesn't have access can make an appointment with somebody, anybody at the office instead of here's a computer for that, you know, dedicated use. I don't know that that would be.
Well, I think it's outside of just, you know, you talked previously about getting our mailings out, and we've got a lot online, like even just the Fairgrounds project, there was a big website build for that. We had our broadband website. But if there's people who don't have access to those, I think there's lots of ways in which our town website stores key information for people that if you don't use it, you might not know. So just having.
Wasn't that the library project though, of having electronics available?
It works with the library.
It absolutely does. So the library, I will say, is an immediate and a very good resource. Virginia Parker acted that on the comments. But they're not always open for that access, either is the town office. But the reason I think that this is approachable is because we do have to regularly cycle out every couple of years, every three to five years. Some of them have gone seven, which is not good from a security perspective. But we have old PCs, right? That we can't really use for staff use anymore because they just get too slow. They're bogged down, the technology doesn't work on them. And so we have a couple that we could probably pull together. I can ask for, I mean, we could probably pull the stuff out of the transfer station, honestly, the monitors. And I think we could do something. One of the things that, kind of riffing on this a little bit, we've had a lot of people request like a genealogy workstation because people like to do the online work and they also like to do some of the stuff. So I think that if we had a workstation available in the same area where we have our paper maps, that might be a place where someone could sit down and do a little bit of research for anything, really. And just limit it to the town website. We could have the, our IT guys restrict access, so it's just the town website and just our resources. But I think we could do something like that. But I'll talk to Angelica and Kristen about that as maybe a records clerk, deputy clerk type of effort. But also, of course, having the town website there, the maps will be available along with all of our many other online resources.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Eric, so you, you talked about the cost for doing this now and the combination of bringing many different pieces together into one place, which is excellent. What would be the ongoing cost annually going forward?
I believe it said 2,100.
2,100, yeah.
Which is just a little bit less than what we had been paying previously. Again, we paid, depending on the number of edits and updates, anywhere from 2,400 to 4,000. But that was pre-COVID pricing, so.
So I think that's a great idea now. Put this payment in to get the base correct and make it usable. We have a lot of property sales. The last two pages of our packet tonight was really interesting on the difference in what people's properties are assessed at and what they've been selling for. So there's a lot of interest in this town about seeing where our properties are. So, thank you.
Awesome. Anything else? Great. I would entertain a motion.
But didn't you already make it?
No, I mentioned it. That's why I was, I was hoping someone else would make it. Yes, but either way.
I would move that we accept, we suspend the rules for.
Purchasing policy.
Purchasing policy, thanks, thanks, I need that. Beginner mistake there. And go move forward with the option one.
Excellent.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and move forward with the updating of our town tax maps. Is there any other discussion on this item? All in favor? Thank you, and Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's item 23042 is to hear a report on the Select Board goal-setting and planning retreat. This was a final report that was sent by Bruce to come and sort of explain a little bit about our evening, things of that nature. So I would just sort of pay attention and sort of mention this. Earlier tonight, when we started our six o'clock chairs meeting, I mentioned that the board came up with our, basically our, you know, goals and things of that nature for the coming year. And I just want to reiterate those if we can now. If anybody has any questions, now would be the time to ask. Or otherwise, I'm going to just basically get these goals out.
Dennis?
Yes, please.
As you mentioned during the chairs meeting, if we could just correct that I'm not Kathleen.
Yes, I, that was, it was, yes, of course.
What the problem is with my name, but okay.
Yes, I know, my God, yes, madam. Absolutely, we know that. You are Catherine. But for those of you who are at home in the packet, it's page 106. But I can tell you that the five main goals of the Select Board are to include, ask, it's about the Fairgrounds field. We're going to ask a question on the June 2023 warrant to gain voters' direction. Church Street sidewalk is a continuing situation that we will watch and make sure that communication comes out as best it can. The enhanced use and space of the town beach, including services and capital investments as well and improvements. Parks and Recreation Staffing and Program Goal, which was carried over from last year. And to basically establish and strengthen the relationship with local schools through cooperation, collaboration, and communication with the Select Board, with the Age Friendly Committee, examples like doing the Senior Cafe, all very good. We also mentioned that there were going to be some items that would be basically administrative in that these would be refinement and not necessarily goals, but things we want to pay attention to. We want to take a look at our cannabis application and our town moorings, possibility for an ordinance or for some sort of guidance there. We're going to pay attention to broadband extensions in underserved or unserved areas of Reed Field as well as a possible beach parking agreement and a revision to the beach parking. And we're also going to try to get ourselves documentation to develop inventory of all town properties and uses, as well as to build a Select Board manual. There are also some other things that the Select Board has to engage in, like labor contract negotiations, so that we can begin to have that contract renewed. Does anyone from the Select Board have anything else to say about our goals or anything in terms of the report from Bruce?
Just one thing, I want to make sure we're cognizant of the whole time is that, you know, we're moving ahead with making the engineering plans for the sidewalk on Church Road and stuff. But I want to keep going back and making sure that we get feedback from interested parties ahead of time before, you know, we're making any decisions on that. Right, and we really have to be super cognizant of it, that's all.
I expect that to be a part of the process. And I know that as a goal of the Select Board, I think we're all going to be watching it very closely and make sure that we're putting our names on the line. We tell folks that live on the Church Road that we're going to pay attention to it. So I think we'll hold ourselves accountable for that. I certainly will. Good job. Anything else for those goals? Wonderful. Just as, just to say, thank you very much to all the Select Board for engaging in the process. I thank you very much, Bruce Burgoyne, for helping to coordinate that evening. And it was really great. We sat around, we ate pizza, we heard stuff, we talked, and I felt like it was really helpful. So thank you very much for that. Item 23043, discuss and develop Select Board budget goals. Eric, what do you want from that?
Well, if I could, one, one last thing on that last item.
Please.
What really relates to this, though? I think I did include the Comprehensive Plan Vision Statement for 2022. This is not final, but I just wanted to point out that these things were arrived at independently, the Select Board Goals and the Comprehensive Plan Vision. And they're very similar. We have a lot of things that are happening that just, you know, concurrently or for whatever reason. I think it's because the board is, is having a good feeling of the community. But prioritizing recreation and open space, prioritizing, you know, supporting our older residents and putting in things like sidewalks that can help with access and public, and public recreation, supporting businesses, all of those things are touched on and prioritized in that vision statement. I just wanted to make that connection that those two things are very, very important. And that the Select Board Goals that you developed in your retreat, along with this plan vision statement, all of these things can and should be reflected in how we spend our money. Because that's really one of the most important ways that we reflect the community priorities. And so as the Select Board puts together your budget goals, I just want you to keep in mind those things that you've already talked about that are maybe not quite so directly connected to the, to the, to the, to the dry budget process, but that are related, including things like supporting it friendly and all of that. So that was my piece. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that that was in there.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Sean.
No, you go ahead first.
No, no, I was just going to transition into the budget meeting schedule. If there was nothing else about the.
I was just going to say that I'm just going to hark on this a little bit more today, I guess, this technology piece. And, and we're talking here, and I agree, but it's great to see all these things working in unison. But we're using, we're using such great language about dynamic, diverse, and inclusive. Yet there's a lot of our documentations on our website that's not accessible. So if we're talking about individuals that might have visual impairments or vision loss or, you know, aging population reading, and they don't have access to our documents, I think we really need to look at how do we make these accessible, our formats and our packets going forward. Something to look into too.
Good point, yes.
Yes, I am.
If there's nothing else about the budget goals, can we transition into our budget process schedule? It's on page 109. Oh, go ahead, Catherine.
So are we not going to state the goals that we were all asked to create? And we're just going to go into the schedule?
Well, I reiterated the goals that we settled on. Do we, do you want to go back in the process to get to those pieces?
Well, I thought Eric had included item 23043 on page 108. Maybe he can speak to that.
Yeah, so it was just, that is a, kind of I was leading into with that last piece of those last several statements that the goals the Select Board sets for a budget could be a little bit different and more focused than perhaps the one you have broadly. So a goal that you might have, or also with the warrant process, this is where you might want to start thinking about priority ordinances. For example. This is where you might want to start thinking about priority ordinances. For example. Having a, an ordinance for the Reed Field Beach that addresses things like public use, waterfront access, parking. And things like that. So just an opportunity to be more focused. And so when I go to the Budget Committee and say, let's start talking about the budget, I can also say at the same time. Oh, by the way, the Select Board wants to make sure that we are incredibly, you know, razor sharp, aware of the fact that interest rates are high. And that we might want, not want to be spending. But I don't know if that's the case or not. But those are the type of things that you might want to put in, where you condense some of your thoughts from the broad goals. Into actionable budget items that help realize them.
Great.
Yeah. So is that something, is that something you wanted from us tonight, or do you want that for the next meeting?
I hope not.
It's certainly up to you, but I think at this point, it sounds like we ought to be talking about that next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I.
Okay.
Anybody else ready, other than Catherine? Good job, Catherine. You're, you get a star.
I'll put it on for next meeting.
Super. I think that's great. Excellent. So let's move then to our schedule.
Yeah, so we again had started to discuss this broadly with the chairs. Nothing has changed. This is the same document that we looked at there. I hope that it meets the intent of what the Select Board was looking for with a priority focus on. Getting the capital discussion happening earlier, trying to spread things out and make it less burdensome for all involved. And I hope that I did not hit any holidays or, you know, school vacations. I went through three or four times, different, different filters to try to make sure I didn't, didn't hit anything. But if something comes up, we can be flexible. And I did maintain both of the, the public hearings. That we traditionally have, the first being the opportunity for folks to affect change perhaps in the budget. And the second being more of an education close to the vote, so that misinformation. Has less of a chance of being promoted. We had a year where we had about six weeks in between the public hearing and, and the vote. And the amount of misinformation and lies that was presented in that period was staggering. So we did adjust that process to make sure that the Select Board had an opportunity to speak truth and be honest about what was happening. Without having someone come in and just undermine it with misinformation, disinformation. So that is an intentional part of the process. Getting real reliable information from the Select Board to the public is an important part of that. And then it just highlights the key dates. And as noted, we did shift around some of the departments and divisions. To try to make it more intuitive and again to allow for that capital discussion to happen more effectively.
Thanks. Great. This looks fantastic. I love it. And I appreciate the color coding. And it makes, makes it very clear. Anyone have any questions about the budget warrants schedule? Fantastic.
So all, basically, it looks like Eric, all joint meetings and public meetings are Thursday nights?
Yes, so those effectively happen at the same schedule as like what we have for the Budget Committee. Because you guys already have enough on your plate. And I think tonight was a good, busy schedule. But this is not always how we should be running budget meetings. We can't cram it together. And I just think that it works better to have those meetings off of the Monday schedule. So, yeah.
Agreed. Very well. Any more questions about the schedule about this? I would suggest, if possible, when we get our announcement, be, start thinking about budget goals right now. So that when we come back in November, we can all share those, or at least those could be, those can be shared in the packet. And then we can have a really robust discussion about that when we get there. Excellent. Then let's move on. We are moving to item twenty-three zero forty-five. Consider a contract with Goral Palmer for Church Road Sidewalk Engineering and Design Services. If you'll remember correctly, the last time we had a meeting, we were awarding them the RFP. This is their formal offering of what they want to do. And that is what we are looking at right now. If you are keeping score at home, this is page one ten in your packet.
All right.
Eric, yeah.
So this is the contract that they presented. I have spoken with both folks from DOT. That are assisting us with this project. And I think that the, the number that we're looking at. Feels really large. I'll just say that. Eighty-one thousand dollars for design, engineering, planning work is a big number. But that is the cost to manage a federally funded project like this and deliver the high quality of public involvement. And review and assessment and design that's truly going to deliver the type of product we want to see in Reed Field. I'll say that upfront. I will also say that it's an eighty-twenty match. So the town of Reed Field would only be obligated for. If this number holds, about sixteen thousand dollars of that cost. We have currently around forty-nine thousand dollars in reserve that was voted on and approved by the, by the public. To be spent for this project and this purpose. If this is approved, which I do hope it is, and we can move forward. It would leave us about twenty-seven thousand dollars in that reserve, which means that when we come to construction, we would likely need to raise. More matching funds to get the project completed, because I don't think that a hundred fifty thousand dollars is what we need to make that happen. Just wanted to make that point upfront. But we've always said all along, these are estimates. It's a three, five-year process. This work, right now, the schedule that they're looking at is to have everything done by the end of twenty twenty-three. So that means that once we finish this, we'll have all the plans, we'll have all of the information we need to move forward with construction. We can make a decision about whether we move forward with construction at that time, or perhaps more than likely at the next town meeting in June. But of twenty twenty-four. But this is part of the process. And I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of the. The cost, the match, what we had available for funds. And my belief and the belief of the main DOT staff that we're working with, that this is a good proposal. It is incredibly thorough and complete, and it delivers what we need to meet the federal guidelines. I will say, however, that I hope you can approve this as an up-toamount and give me the ability to try to negotiate that price down with Goral Palmer. Never accept the first offer, right? And so I think that that's something that we need to be doing. And it's my intent to work with the Road Committee to try to pull this down. By some fraction and see where we can land.
So Eric, can I just ask a question about, because I haven't been through all of this, like. We, if we approve this amount tonight, they're going to go ahead and they're going to do this design.
Yes, including the public participation engagement process.
So that, that will be part of that.
That will be part of it. And what they don't do.
The public engagement part front-loaded on that? Or do they come up with a proposal, here, what do you think of this? Like, how, how exactly is that structured?
If you go to the page, I don't have the page numbers.
It's in the proposal. They have a detailed schedule of activity. However, what I will say is that this, this, what they're proposing isn't everything that we want to do. I think that it's important to have multiple public meetings, one for the residents on the road who would be considered a butters. But also for everybody else in town who is going to be paying for this and many who will be utilizing it. Who will have the value of having higher property values, having more recreational opportunities. The connection, having people from the school who will be using this to access the school properties. We need to bring in everybody. It's not just the folks on Church Road who should be making this decision. They're important stakeholders. But I think that we need to have a very robust process that looks at the value for the town, the, the value and the impacts for the butters. And also for other user groups that might not be specifically identified here. So what they proposed, just like with the Fairgrounds project, the engineers proposed a couple of meetings. We ended up having three or four. So I think that we will expand upon what's here and make sure that we have the public process that we want. And not just be limited by, by this, because it's an expensive approach. We know how to talk to our neighbors. I think that we'll do a good job of that when the time comes.
Yeah, and I think we're hyper-aware of this.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so we understand that we're certainly not going to let anything be approved or started without the idea that there's going to be. Some serious involvement. Carol, go for it.
I guess the anxiety that's out there is this is going to affect a whole lot of people. And there's several, many historic homes with, that are very close to the street. So some of the concern is, are these property owners going to be made whole if we're disturbing their parking area and all that? And I guess that's the anxiety that's out there is, if this is a go and it's been deemed on this side. And a property owner is negatively impacted, is the town somehow going to make them whole? And give them an alternative way to use their land?
I would say that absolutely, yes, we are looking at every option and every measure. Just to be clear, I've, maybe you've heard differently. I've only heard one concern about parking. And we're not going to name names because it's not, we're trying, trying to avoid that. But I think it's important to recognize that there are a lot of people that are affected. I've had people approach me on both sides of the street. Adamant that it belongs either on their side or on the opposite side. I think it's too soon to really get into that. But one thing I will say is, this can be a challenging process. The town has a very wide, wide of way. Very wide, wide of way there. And so a lot of times people might think that they have ownership up to a certain point. But the town actually owns quite a ways onto their property. We don't want to be a bully. We don't want to come through this and say, well, we're going to do this no matter what, and we're going to give you pennies. One of the benefits of the federal process is we are obligated to do everything possible to make sure that we people are kept whole. If we have any, any eminent domain, which is a word I hate to use, and I don't think we will get to that point with this project. But in cases where that happens, there is a lengthy and burdensome federal process that we have to go through. To make sure that we have assessors and appraisers and that everybody gets full value for their property if there's an issue. But backing up from that, we want to make sure we have a project that meets the needs of the community, that includes the butters. We're always happy to negotiate, to try to find common ground, to pay people for easements, if that's what's needed. To pay people for improvements to their property to somehow address what might be an impact. We've done it before on other projects. We've done mediation when there's been conflict in community on private roads before. So we're, we're hundred percent willing, I am, I know the Select Board is, I know the Road Committee is, and the federal government wants it that way. We're going to do our best to make sure people are kept whole and happy, because the last thing we want or need is, is. And a challenging divisive process.
Yeah.
Nobody wants that.
Especially when it's for such a good thing. So Catherine, you have your hand up. Go for it.
I do. So I'm, I agree with everything that's been said so far by everybody. My concern is what Eric pointed out, which is that there, in that whole schedule, it talks about. Doing up to three different plans, about looking at both sides of the street, about crosswalks, about entrances. It's very, very thorough, but it only has one public meeting. And so I think if we're to approve this, the motion should contain. Not only the up-toamount that Eric requested, but, and a specific increase in public meetings required. I don't think we have to state the number, but that there shall be more than one public meeting. And I think it should occur sooner in the process than where they put the first one. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Did everybody understand that? Any questions about what Catherine was saying?
That makes total sense.
Yeah. I, I think it's, I think it's, I, I think if we from the, as the kids say, from the jump. If we let them know that what we are, we are prioritizing in this process is communication and making sure that they understand that. You know, then there's no doubt, you know, we, we can't, we can't mess it up. So I like that addition to the, the motion. And if we, we're, we're almost there. But if there's no other objection, I would have Catherine make that motion.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sorry, did I just like totally miss something? What was this about one single meeting?
So the.
Okay, so this is what we're talking about. Yep, go ahead, Eric.
I'll let you take it now.
Oh, the, the Goral Palmer has given us a, a sort of, what is kind of like a. I would say a outline of a schedule they would have. And one of the things that they had mentioned was having a. Public meeting during this process, but they, they, they want to just do one public, like big meeting. Not that they wouldn't be taking other stuff. So we want to make sure that they understand that if we approve this contract, we want to mandate. More than one public meeting to carry through our commitment that there will be public meetings. Yes.
I definitely recognize that as a weakness in their application. That's why I started off with that statement.
Yep.
There's a difference between maybe the process the engineers carry out and the process the towns carry out, the town carries out to help inform that discussion.
Yep.
And so I think that you're right, that having more engineer meetings is a good thing that can be part of the negotiation that we have. But that doesn't, shouldn't limit it, because we can have meetings without engineers. Sometimes it's helpful to do that.
Yeah. And, and the, just for, for, for reference, one forty-four is where their schedule is. The public meeting on this tentative schedule is for June fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. After what they have, what they have listed above, which is their complete, their concept plan and a draft package. So I, I would, I would agree with that, Catherine. I think we should mandate from the jump, having more public meetings. And I, does that make sense? Can we make this motion now? Good. Catherine?
I would.
Would you?
I would move that we approve the project contract with Goral Palmer, subject to an up-toamount. Of eighty, Eric, what's the number?
One thousand six hundred, I believe. Let me get back there.
Yeah.
Eighty-one thousand two hundred. It's right at the top. And to include more than one public meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Can we change that, that say, because they, they list as one in-person public meeting, one that they'll be at. So I think we need to say to include more than one in-person public meeting, not just publicly.
Sure. That would be my motion, Steve. Thank you.
You know, because a public meeting could just mean the town.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's important to do the stakeholder groups and, and, yeah, yep.
Good. Everybody get that?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Goral Palmer. With the stipulations that we mentioned about having a public, more public meeting with the stakeholders. And is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much, Catherine.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Our last item on our agenda is item twenty-three zero forty-six. To schedule a volunteer appreciation event. Eric, can you do that in two minutes?
Yeah, we, we typically like to celebrate our volunteers. We've done less of that because of COVID. The last two years, we haven't had a proper volunteer appreciation event. Typically, what we do is we would have everybody get together. We have forty, sixty people. We've done ice cream socials at the ball field before. We've done brunch settings here. Where we, the staff volunteer their time to make casserole rolls and things. And so we've done a lot of this in the past, but it hasn't happened because of COVID. I think it's very important, and we talked about this at the retreat, to, to celebrate our volunteers, to show appreciation. We have a budget of originally five hundred dollars. We have four hundred and twenty-five remaining. I would like to utilize some of that budget and have an event in person with food. Excuse me, to celebrate our volunteers sometime in the month of, perhaps November or maybe, maybe January, February. Depending on how things fall, but I'd like to do it sooner rather than later if possible. And providing the planning comes into, into play. To do that in-person, large group event. And I don't have anything proposed specifically, other than perhaps a Saturday morning. It seems to be a popular time.
Yep, I think it'd be great. So a Saturday morning brunch, do you have an idea of a date already?
I, I don't really, it was mentioned that we might want to try to work with someone like the Weather Vane who could potentially host that for us. I haven't been able to reach out to them about availability or scheduling, but I think that if the board is generally supportive of this idea. I can work to make this happen sometime, I'll say, in the next three months. And give as much value as we can to the, or as much appreciation as, as we can to those volunteers with the budget we have available. and give as much value as we can to the or as much appreciation as we can to those volunteers for the budget we have available.
Absolutely. You just want a thumbs up from us. We don't have to vote on anything. Yeah?
No, if you're okay with me moving this forward, I'll do it, and I'll just give a kind of a straw poll when it comes time for.
Any objection, Catherine?
No.
Okay, sounds good. I know I threw it. I threw it for a loop that time. Go for it, Carol.
I don't want to spend anything on an appreciation. I really don't. I think you say a big thank you. I think this is not the year to have something catered. I'm sorry. I'm just going to be a stick in the mud.
That's okay. Do we need to vote on it? Because we can certainly, you know, mandate the vote.
Yes.
Probably with this with dissent, you probably want to have a vote and make some discussion.
Absolutely. Let's 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 make a motion. Do anybody else want to do that?
I make a motion to have the town manager look into spending our funds in the up to four hundred and twenty-five dollars for volunteer appreciation. Right, something.
Excellent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to arrange for a volunteer appreciation event for the town of Reed Field volunteers. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. Catherine?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. And all opposed? All right, one oppose. That's Carol. So it carries. Thank you, Eric, for doing this, and thank you for the volunteers.
I'll see what I can do about getting it for nothing, but I can't.
Yeah, no, that would be silly. Thank you so much. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yes, have a great evening. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it, and be safe. Oh, gavel. The gavel makes it official.